Go ahead and get ready, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for coming out today. It's 5 o'clock and I'm going to call this March 12, 2025 Public Hearing to Order. My name is Claire Zucker and I'm the Chair of the Regional Wastewater Advisory Committee, and I will be conducting this meeting today. Jeanette Lee, the Regional Wastewater Reclamation Department of the Regional Wastewater Reclamation Department will take roll call of attending committee members. Good morning, members of the committee, either present in person or participating online. Please indicate your presence by stating here when I call your name. Craig Canizaro.
Here.
Steve Foley.
Here.
Ellen Forrest.
Here.
Alejandra Fravel Arce.
Here.
Charles Matt Mathewson.
Here.
Doug Oldendorf.
Here.
Eric Tewold.
Here.
Kirsten Wainsvik.
Here.
Anne Marie Wolf.
Here.
Claire Zucker.
Here.
We are missing Scott Colton Asia Filbin. We have 10 members, that is sure. So we have a corner. Excellent. I'm going to start with a virtual meeting reminders. Make sure that all attendees can fully participate in the public hearing. We request that all public audience members attending the public hearing virtually adhere to the following virtual meeting reminders. Please mute your microphones. This will help ensure there's no feedback or background noises that may interfere with the speaker. When you're called upon to speak, please unmute your microphone. Identify yourself prior to speaking. Speak clearly and modulate your speaking volume as necessary to be heard in the meeting room. And do not forget to mute your microphone when you have finished speaking. If at any time a member of the virtual audience is unable to hear in room discussion, please raise your hand or place a comment in the chat. Can everybody hear okay so far? Good. This meeting is being recorded to satisfy the open meeting law requirement and we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Great. I'm going to move on with the introduction to today's meeting. First, I'd like to welcome into the second public meeting hearing, the help by the Regional Wastewater Reclamation Advisory Committee, or the RAC, regarding the proposed increases to the Regional Wastewater Reclamation Department sewer volume rate, service charge, and wastewater utility fee. The rate changes are proposed to occur starting September 2025 and increase each year for four years through fiscal year 2029. In addition to the proposed rate increases, RWRD is proposing to retire the wastewater utility fee discount on future developments. During this meeting, Pima County staff will present information supporting this proposed rate increase. The goal of this hearing is to allow the public to hear the proposed rate increases and to make comment. During the call to the audience, audience members who wish to make a comment will be allowed to speak. We ask the members of the public remain courteous and respectful to the other public hearing participants and that all comments relate to the proposed fee increases being presented today. For those audience members attending this hearing in person that would like to make a public comment, you can please complete the public comment card over there to the right. He will provide your name, address, and contact information, preferably your phone number and email address. Oh, I skipped ahead. Sorry. That's for the in-person. You'll provide all that information. But for the people online, what you do is you raise your hand. Use the raise your hand feature and then provide your name, address, contact information, preferably your phone number and email address via MST's chat. So you put that in the chat. We also ask that you provide a brief summary of your comments on the question you wish to ask. Remember to lower your hand once you've finished speaking. RAC members are instructed to not respond to audience members' comments. However, we may provide answers to direct questions if appropriate. Public audience members are only permitted to speak during calls to the audience and will be called upon by the committee. And now we are going to move on to our presentation by Pima County staff. We have RWRD Director Jackson Jenkins and Finance Director Art Coon, and they will both speak and now present regarding the proposed rate increases.
Thank you, Claire.
Sure. Jackson, why don't you bring up your presentation?
Okay. And as Claire indicated, this is the second of three public hearings. The third one will be March 27th at the Abrams Building over on Hope Road, kind of on the south side of town. And that one will be 8:00 in the morning. Because each of these public meetings are advertised and notified that they're one-hour meetings, we need to be in session for one hour. So from 5:00 to 6:00, you know, there is not a significant public turnout. So I will kind of shorten my presentation from last time because most of all of you were there last time and heard it. But by all means, if anybody has any questions, I can delve into much more detail than I would probably do right now. So again, I'm Jackson Jenkins, Director of the Department, and please proceed with my show. So I start off the presentation with our mission. The department's mission is to protect the public health, safety, and the environment by providing quality service, environmental stewardship, and renewable resources. Next slide. I want to show, really, this is just from the year fiscal year 2013-14 through the current fiscal year. This is what our operations and maintenance budget has been each of the respective years. And you could see we've done a pretty good job for the past 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 years of a pretty steady locked-in budget where we've offset the pretty low levels of inflation. But here in the last four years, you can see, I'll show in my presentation, where inflation is starting to win the battle and the amount of money we need to fund our services and the work we do in the utility is obvious. So I'll go through that in a minute. Next. This pie chart just gives you an idea of the primary cost areas or cost topics for the department for the annual operating and maintenance budget. The biggest wedge of pie is personnel services. That's our biggest cost. It's wages and benefits for the employees that it takes to run all of the infrastructure, approximately $1.3 billion worth of infrastructure that makes up our utilities scattered all over Pima County. The next one is professional services. There's two main components of that orange wedge. And that is of the seven wastewater facilities that we operate, one of them, just one of them, is operated by a private contractor. We paid a contractor to run it, and that's part of the professional service. And then also one other interesting tidbit, the department does not bill our user fees to our customer base. We piggyback with the water companies, a number of water companies, to bill the sewer portion included on their water bill. And so we pay four major water companies. That's already bought and part of the little services. They're a little over $5 million. Repair maintenance, when you have that much infrastructure and five, I'm sorry, seven wastewater facilities and 3,500 miles of conveyance pipeline, flow monitoring, and pump stations, and all kinds of different things. It's a lot of work that has to be done every year. The blue, the light blue portion is energies. That's a little over eight, right at eight and a half million dollars. That's another big one. Chemicals is almost eight million. And then they get into smaller wedges of pie that are there, but I'm just going to skip over that because I'm going to now show a series of slides for those bigger pieces of pie to kind of show what inflation, the impact of inflation, what it's done to us that's put the pressures on us to need to finally request a rate increase after eight years with no rate increases. Next slide. Here's budgeted positions. You can see the blue line. This also goes back to 2017-18. And we had 451 employees, but you could see up through the current year, we're now at 399. We've had a history even before this of rightsizing and looking at ways to do away with the, you know, not in a negative way, but to just be more efficient to utilize our staff in better ways. And we never had to have a layoff. We've done it through attrition. But really, it made great headways in reducing staff numbers. But the cost in orange, the cost for wages and benefits, has continued to go up, especially in more recent years as the county has realized that we've had pretty high turnover and have had a lot of vacancies that are hard to compete in the marketplace. And so they've recently made some adjustments, adjustments to the wages and benefits packages to try and be 50% competitive in the marketplace. So if any job in the county, not just for wastewater, this is a whole county effort, where the intent was a firm came in and said, all right, we're going to find the 50% point of what wage to offer employees where half of the similar jobs are paying less and half are paying more. That was the target. How well we've done, we'll see with time, but iterate, the cost has gone up even though we've been able to reduce the number of employees. Next slide. Here's a similar slide from 2013-14 which shows the cost per a full-time equivalent. What is the cost per employee? And you can see again, a fairly flat, consistent, you know, $70,000 a year that's now getting up, I don't know, what is it? Nineties, in the $90,000 range. And that again is the cost of wages have gone up, the benefits have gone up, and that's depicted in that chart. But we have reduced staffing to offset it to a certain extent. Next slide. Chemical expenditure. Here's, these get kind of busy, but the same thing. This shows over the past several years, 18, 2018, 19, on the left going up to the budget in the green. And we've gone from $3.5 million in chemicals upwards of $8, almost $9 million in chemicals. And it's all due to inflation. We'll show that on the next slide. Here's a listing of a number of the chemicals we use, or at least the larger quantities we use of hydrochloride. That's a, you know, disinfection chemical and an odor chemical that's been used, and we use quite a bit of it. In fiscal year 19, we used to pay 78 cents a gallon for hydrochloride. Now, in this last fiscal year, we're paying $1.79 a gallon, which is a 129% increase. Chloride is similar. It's a 110% increase over that timeframe. Sodium bisulfide is an 83% increase. Magnesium chloride polymer. And at the bottom, methyloguard, another odor masking agent we use. All have exceeded inflation in the unit price of those chemicals, even though we're using no more or even less in some cases. Next slide. Electricity, both of these are all on one graph. Over here on the left is how many kilowatt hours we use each year from 2016 on. And you can see again, fairly consistent usage of electricity. Even it dropped off as we became part of the Department of Energy Better Plants Program. And we took on a goal of reducing our energy consumption by 25% over a 10-year period. And we did that. But of course, we treat more sewage over time with people, with the population growth, not very high population growth, but that does add to it. And we also, you know, have added a number of unit processes to help us as cost savings type projects that we've implemented. And we've still been able to hold the same or even reduce electricity. But over on the right, you see the cost of electricity has continued to go up. And in fact, over this period of time, from 2016 to current, we've seen a 52% increase in the cost per kilowatt hour of electricity that we have to pay for. Thanks. Professional services, I indicated, we have one contractor working over here at our Anguina Web facility, one of seven facilities. That's the only one that has a contractor there. And then we also have, you know, over $5 million worth of billing services from four of the major water tanks. And you see those increases also with time. And they, a little less significant, but 22% increase over that time. Probably a little more in line with inflation, but still an increase. Next slide. Repairs and maintenance. There again, back in 2018-19, it shows that we were at almost $9 million and actually dropped off a little. And now we're up over $14 million and $15 million. Again, the cost of the maintenance supplies and services that we use have gone up. I threw this one in. This is the Consumer Price Index, just to give you an idea of what inflation has done from 2016 on. And we used to be, you know, very close to 2%, even a little bit lower than 2%, kind of a pretty steady inflation. But then in 2021, we went to 4.7, 8.0, 4.1, and almost 3. And so those numbers were pretty significant in the amount of things that we got to buy. And that's, that's why we're having this conversation and presentation. Next slide. Our revenues. This is the user fees. Our department is an enterprise fund, so most, I would say, 90 to 95% of the revenue we get is the user fees that we charge our customers. We have, I don't know, I think close to 300,000 customers in our, in our service area. But there's two components. I'll try not to get too crazy with my presentation, but the user fee that people pay, it has two components. A fixed service fee and a variable water volume fee. And there is not a technology that can very well measure how much sewage somebody puts into our system, especially for a residential, you know, a four-inch line coming out of your house with sporadic flow and different debris and items in there. You just can't do it. Technology isn't there for that. If you were a big system with a lot of volume, there's a possibility to do it, but in this case, there isn't. So we use winter quarter averaging to determine how much we should charge somebody based on a volume. And that's how much water you use in the three consecutive lowest winter months, which typically are December, January, and February. Then we run a formula. And the formula, back in 1516, we had 24, the average residential bill was $24.67 per volume and $12.63 for the fixed service fee. And then here in June, I think in May or June of 2017, that was our last increase. Eight years ago, we had a 3% increase in our user fee. And we went from $12.63 for a fixed service fee to $13, where it is today. And the average volume fee went from $24.67 to $25.41. But now fast forward, just last year, 2324, we still had that $13 fixed service fee. But because we live in a very conservation-minded community, over, over the same timeframe, the average resident home used to contribute 10ccf or 100 cubic feet of water in that winter quarter average. That number has reduced down to now 6. So just by the nature of how we build people, our revenues are declining because the amount of water being used is less. And as new homes get built, people use low-flow fixtures, low-flow toilets, low-flow showerheads, low-flow washing machines. And even older homes are trying to retrofit to low-flow things and zero-scape and irrigation and all those things. And so our average bill just last year, where we were at $24.67 and now at $25.41, it's now $21.77 because of the conservation that's taking place, but we're still at $13 service fee. But that's a fight. Here's these, again, strategic milestones, milestones on. The monthly bill average total was $37.30 per resident. And that's then, and again, in June of 2017, we raised 3% the rates and the bill went to $38.41. And then in 2324, the volume being used by residents dropped, so it's back down to $34.77. And if the Board of Supervisors approves our four requested rate increases, we'll end up back at $37.73 in four years, but $35.81 this next year, which is less than we started at, you know, several years ago. Next slide. Here's, this is kind of important to note. We did it on an annual basis. The residents in Pima County pay $417.29 for sewer fees for the year. The national average is 588. EPA District 9, of which we're a part of, is 513. Town of Morana is 518. Town of Sarita is 679. Phoenix is way down at 215. They're the lowest in the nation. And then you have some other numbers of other Arizona communities. And if this next year's rate increase is approved, the average will be just under $430 a year. Yeah. Yes.
How come Phoenix is so low? Is it just by sheer volume of population?
Yeah, they definitely have a strong economies of scale because they run two plants and they're very big mega quacks. So they have a lot of economies of scale. But one thing that's really significant for Phoenix, it's not that way here due to agreements and other settlements. But Phoenix makes a lot of effluent or water out the end of their plant. They sell it, like Talaverty Nuclear Generating Plant, maybe even Cooler Reactors. And they'll pay a pretty penny for water. So Phoenix has a tremendous revenue stream from selling water. We own very little of the effluent from prior agreements in the community and stuff. So it's just the way it is. Okay? Good question. Next. Also, every time, back in the day when we were raising our rates to help fund a RAC program, Regional Optimization Master Plan, we had to always look at a program we have, which is the Sewer Outreach Subsidy. It's a low-income program, so, you know, for anybody that struggles to pay a utility, especially a sewer bill, we try to offer some help. And so we have a program that's been in place now for a while where there's three tiers. If you're at the 100%, you know, when the federal poverty level, if you're a family of four, they have a fixed annual income that says you're, you're at the poverty level at 100%. And if you are, you can get a 75% subsidy on your sewer bill. If you're at 125, if you make 25% more than that, you can get a 50% discount. And if you're at 150% of the poverty level, you can get a 25% discount. We spend about $1.3 million a year in subsidies, or we don't spend it, we just don't bill a little over 5,000 residents that participate in it, you know, about $1.2 or $1.3 million. So with the cost increase, we're like, well, let's take a look at the program. So we're looking at two scenarios right now, and we're doing it in conjunction with Tucson Water because we both participate in a similar subsidy and we want to work together and stay the same because they're our biggest builder and we don't want to create more confusion or complications. So one of them is with that three tier of $25.50 and 75% discounts or subsidies, and it goes up to 150% of the poverty level, we want to extend it up to the 200% of the poverty level. So if somebody makes twice what the federal poverty level is, they can still get a discount. We'll just extend that last group. One other one we're looking at is also to extend it to the 200% poverty level. But we will change the discounts for everyone. The lowest, or I'm sorry, the lowest income or the highest subsidy would be 80% instead of 75. The 50% people would get 60. The 25% people would get 40. And the new group that goes from 150 to 200, so we get a 20% discount. So a little higher discount or an extended discount for the group. We're looking at what that impact might be. We're getting pretty good alignment with the city, but we will be presenting eventually to the board, you know, at some point. It probably won't be in time for the rate increases, but we're trying to modify the program to be even more generous. We're considered one of the most generous utility subsidy programs, but anytime we raise rates, we want to take a look at it. I think it's a reasonable change. Thanks. Next slide. But here's some numbers. Yeah, almost 1.3 million was not billed, 5,120 participants in the subsidy program. And that's the history of number of customers, very fairly consistent. A while back, we went on a tremendous marketing campaign, you know, make sure we did it in, at least in Spanish, you know, bilingual. And I think we even targeted some additional languages to try and get outreach to people that may need it. And we did see an uptick, but we'll also be looking at that to see if we're good with our modern social media tools. Maybe we can come up with some ways to do further advertising or outreach. Right, Justin?
Right.
All right. Next, next slide. So here, this one is the wastewater utility fee, which often is referred to as the connection fee. Whenever a new house or a new business, if somebody connects to our system, they're expecting a service for a certain volume of water. And we have an average based on water meter size, what they're going to tie up in our capacity or need in our capacity. And that, that rate, when, back when we were doing RAC, we did a very detailed study and found that the average dollars per gallon for a connection fee were $16.02. Then in 2017, I told you, we did a 3% inquiry, so we also raised the connection fee 3%. So it went from $16.02 to $16.50 per gallon. And at $16.50 per gallon for the average residential volume used for all the water company data, that's like, I think it's on the next slide when we change, $4,188 of the connection fee. Somewhere, maybe it's not on that slide. But here's where we went to $16.50. Well, we just redid the calculation and we came up with $21.34 is the value of that connection capacity based on our remaining capacity in the system and our asset value. And so, turn, next slide, please. We also, because I mentioned, we're seeing customers use less water. So forever, we've been using 80 gallons per person per day. That's an 80 huge regulatory criteria when we're planning for capacity use. But we dropped it to 75 gallons and we used our new $21.34. And we came up with, instead of 41.88, which it is now, to 47.01 if we go with four 3% increases over the next four years, you know, and we'll work its way up to 4,700. Next slide. So like I said, currently, the homes, you know, and residents use 5 eighths, three-quarter, or one inch, and they all would pay 41.88, but that will go next year to 43.14, 44.43, 45.76, and 47.13 with those four increases. And we, we did the math. It came out to 47.01, pretty close to 47.13, so we're going to call that good and continue to monitor it. But that's how and why that one's going up as well. Next slide. I just threw a construction journal that at least shows it for the Phoenix area, how much the cost of building things like capacity for a wastewater plant and pipelines to convey the sewage. And a lot of current values are showing that construction is even, the cost of construction is even outpacing the numbers we're looking at. So we don't think it's going to be any less than what we put out there, but just, just a slide as information. Next. One last one. Claire mentioned the third component of the rate increases. Besides raising the user fee and the connection fee and wastewater utility fee as well, we also want to discontinue the sunset, or sunset, the program for discounts, where as far back as we can recall, there, there was a program, in fact, I believe it was started by the city of Tucson back before 1979, when Pima County became the sewer entity and we took the city's sewer infrastructure. Or, you know, we didn't just take it. We worked out a trade here. At any rate, that discount program was, we thought, kind of generous to give development some discounts or credit, or discounts is the right term, for sewers that they built. Even though they weren't building them for us, they were building them for the development they were putting in. You know, we still have a credit program where a developer is going to build a neighborhood over here and they're going to put in an eight-inch line for their capacity needed for what they're building. And we're like, hey, Mr. or Mrs. Developer, we don't want you to put in an eight-inch line. We want you to put in a 12-inch line because we know there's this development that's coming upstream and they'll flow through yours, and so we want to make sure you have enough capacity. But, but we'll give you credits. We'll, we'll cover that difference in cost. And that, that still is effective. But this other one, we're just not sure how or why it started, and it's survived this long. But now that we're looking at raising our rates, we thought we should stop giving away free money to the development community when we're not mandating or dictating what they put in. They've just put in for their own development. So we'll be meeting with Saba later this month to talk to their group about it. We've talked to MPA about it. So it's a different stakeholder group, but we are having conversations and looking for feedback. Okay, next slide. This is just an interesting one. I'm sure This is just an interesting one. I'm sure you can read the fine print back there. But this is all the utilities that people pay, you know, as part of living in the community. Electricity is twenty-three percent, internet is thirteen, gas is twelve percent, phones are eleven percent, sewer's eleven percent, trash is eleven percent, streaming is ten percent, and water is eight percent. And, um, it wasn't too long ago where water used to be more than a higher percentage of sewage, but that's not the case anymore with the level of treatment and regulatory compliance criteria. But it's just interesting to see how the proportion of somebody's bills or, or cost for utility services might, might look. And we're about eight, about eleven percent of that bill. Next. All right, I think I'm going to hand over the technical, the brains of the organization. Mark Boron is going to talk about some other financial matters. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Jackson. Uh, pleasure to be here with you all this evening. Uh, although I'm not that, uh, made it on Park One Finance and Risk Management Director for the county. Uh, I don't have twenty-four slides, so we're, it's worth, we're going to be up against it to try and get it last until, until six o'clock. Uh, what, one of, uh, the, the, our mission is to help partner with Jackson and the other departments to put together these, these financial forecasts. Uh, so all of you are very, or should be very familiar with, with this spreadsheet. This is a forecast that you've wanted for, Jackson. Uh, this, this spread, this spreadsheet is without the rate increases or the public numbers that I want to call your attention to, uh, that really are key metrics for us, uh, as we look at the financials. Um, the, the rev, the total revenue number here, uh, beginning in twenty-five, twenty-six and, you know, going through twenty-nine is hundred and eighty-eight million to hundred and ninety million out in the, 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 over here of the projection. You can see that that remains pretty stable. And as, as we look at our O N M costs, and Jackson did a very good job in his presentation of talking about the pressures on the, uh, that he faces from an O N M perspective with, uh, professional services, the cost of chemicals, inflation, so on and so forth. Uh, we have a, a, it's five percent from twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six, and then three percent in the out years. Uh, one of the things that Jackson and I have talked about is, is three percent really reasonable as a year-over-year increase? When inflation is at three or over three, maybe, maybe not. Uh, so what does that do then if, if we don't have any rate increases? Uh, what does that do to our rating agency ratio, which is a key metric that we've, we've discussed pretty lately in, in our, uh, uh, subcommittee meetings on our board committee, our web team. So you can see a very healthy projection at twenty-four, twenty-five with one three seven. I will tell you, the rating agencies like to see this ratio at about one point three. Uh, moving forward, it represents the financial stability of the utility, and we'll get into why that's important in a couple of slides. Without a rating increase, uh, you can see it's one point two eight in twenty-six, one point two one, and then dropping all the way down to one point oh nine. Uh, that would not be a good metric, especially as we, as we look at the capital improvement program uh, and how, how the utility has historically funded and what is projected to fund the capital improvement program moving into the out years. Uh, so a couple of key numbers there as we, as we, as we move the slide. And it changed, the, the stat didn't change, but I want to call your attention. This is with the proposal rate increases that Jackson pointed out in his presentation. So three percent on the volume metric fee in twenty-six and then one point seven five percent thereafter, and then three percent on the utility revenue fee, uh, out into, uh, the, the, uh, from, from twenty-six on to twenty-nine. So what does that do to our total revenue number? Uh, one ninety-two in twenty-six, one ninety-eight in twenty-seven, two oh one and two oh five and twenty-eight, twenty-nine respectively. Those are, uh, that's a four million dollar jump in twenty-six, uh, eight point four million dollar jump in twenty-seven, twelve point two million dollar jump in twenty-eight, and sixteen point two million dollars in twenty-nine. Uh, we kept the, the O N M cost lots of this five percent here and then three percent in the out years. Uh, so what does that, that impact have on, whether the rate impacts, with the rate increases that have on the rating agency ratio? Again, one three seven doesn't remain unchanged in twenty-five, and then one three five in twenty-six, three four in twenty-seven, three two in twenty-eight, and three three in twenty-nine. So a very healthy rating agency ratio with the rate increases, uh, that we're proposing or that Jackson has laid out very nicely in his presentation. Next slide. So how does that, how does that impact us from a capital improvement perspective and as we're looking at this from a debt perspective, right? So you can see here in twenty-four, we have a forty-five million dollar C I P, uh, projected to have fifty-six million in twenty-five, sixty-three in twenty-seven, sixty-eight twenty, or sixty-three twenty-six, sixty-eight twenty-seven, and then the big on sixteen and one twelve in the out years as, as, as it talks about expanding and building another nine mile gallon for the shop in Tucson. How does this, how does this all tie in with the, the debt program, right? If you go to the next slide, majority of the debt, majority of the capital improvement program is funded by debt, right? And so here you can see the entire program was funded in debt in twenty-four. We have fifty million dollars in twenty-five, and that's, that's on a fifty-six million dollar total, which means we're planning on using cash for the difference. In twenty-six, it's, uh, sixty million dollars for the debt and a sixty-three million dollar C I P program. In twenty-seven, it's fifty-five million dollars worth of debt and a sixty-eight million dollar C I P program. And then we have, uh, eighty-six million dollars in, in, in debt. And we tailored that down again, as I mentioned in our last presentation, based upon, uh, relative uncertainty on, on the size of that facility as, as to get to be determined. So when we, when we talk about the impact of the rating agency ratio, right, what does that metric mean for us? It means that the higher the ratio, the lower cost of debt is going to cost us to, um, issue. And then obviously, the, the lower the cost, the lower the, the interest rate, which helps our, our rate payers, our constituents. Um, and it also helps with the debt service, right? So the higher the ratio, the lower the debt, or the lower the, uh, higher the ratio, the lower the interest cost, the better for the county. So when we talk about what, what that rating agency ratio means, right? So this, this slide here, it may be hard to see at the back, but we have four categories here rating from a little over one oh five up to one six zero, where, uh, we're measuring the rating agency ratio with and without the rates. The green bar is the baseline, which is what the rating agencies have said, i- is the baseline for, uh, for at least our, our county. That's one point three. Uh, so again, going back to that, the forecast, as you saw, without the rates, it, it, without the rating, without the P increase, it goes down with the P increase. You can see the, the blue line is with the rate increase, we're very good, getting up to one, almost close to one oh four in twenty-seven and maintaining that stability through twenty-nine. The red line here is without the rate increases, uh, so a little less than one three, dropping down to one point oh nine, I believe it was that number in twenty twenty-nine. So again, all more important, uh, to maintain that rating agency ratio, uh, and, and the P proposed P increase is that was just something here, definitely drive those revenue numbers, uh, which will help, you know, Jackson's total overall budget and, and we talked about building out that capital improvement program. And so, um, uh, that really concludes the preparing remarks I have. If you have to answer any questions, uh, we have twenty minutes left.
And there is food.
All right. Move on to the calls of the audience. Thank you very much for your presentations. Um, and, uh, we'll move on to the calls to the audience portion of the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. I don't believe we have any speakers, do we? We have nobody in the room, uh, for audience members and nobody online. All right. Okay, in that case, um, we will just hang out for
Take a food break.
Twenty minutes, we'll take a food break and then we will, uh, give the closing remarks and be adjourned. Thank you very much. If anybody, uh, would like to speak at any point in time, just raise your hand. I'm going to go ahead and mute the room so you don't hear all the questions. So, um,
Please don't leave. We want to keep the forum and wrap up here.
Yes, please, do not leave. Thank you. Thank you.
I have this note. And the county facility over there, we're going to do what we normally do here, but we're going to do it just though we have a presence courts, the south side. That was a request to county administration. But it's at your regular eight o'clock time, we'll go for an hour, and then you can go into your regular meeting to have any discussion you want. But I just want to remind people, don't come here. You know, if you're online, that's fine, but otherwise show up at Abrams, and that information is in the, it was posted.
That's right. And at the end of the public hearing, we will have discussion about the many comments that we received. Trying desperately to make a decision on our recommendations. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Excellent, or the second?
I'll second. Sorry. Steve, you can second, that's fine.
I'd love the second.
Okay, he wants a second. All right.
You can put down.
The ear of the second.
I raised my right.
No discussion, I'm assuming. The motion has been moved and seconded. All members in favor of adjourned the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, the public hearing is adjourned at 6:00 PM on March 12, 2025. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.